Okay, seven o'clock, we'll call on November eighth, two thousand twenty-three Barnes County School Board. First if we'd like to rise and do the budget.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Do you have any additions on the agenda?
Nope.
We'll move right into consent agenda, which is minutes, bills, and financial reports. Anybody have any questions on their unit? Comments, questions, not due to the motion to approve.
Motion to approve the consent, consent agenda. Second agenda.
We'll call when you're ready.
Mike.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Cody.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Okay, move on paper form, nobody talk to you?
Nope.
Administrator reports, I'll start with you, Mr. Hurry.
Uh, to my report, and you probably saw the letter I drafted about the lack of drivers around the county, and we talked about it a little bit in our transportation meeting, uh, to just kind of discuss and maybe talk about that in our committee meeting too, about maybe what alternative pickup spots would look like. Hopefully, we never get to that, but what it could possibly, uh, look like with that. And then just some school board convention, which I thought was one of the better ones. Uh, I gave Mike actually a book that I had got just approved on some school construction finance that hopefully will lead to a discussion maybe later in a couple of months after we look at some stuff for that. And then just the other thing that I don't have on here, uh, you know, when they went back into session, really, the only thing that was going to affect us was, I mean, B C N in itself, not the VOTEC, was that transition minimum, and both the Senate and the House passed it. Uh, Senate Bill twenty-three ninety-eight, so it'll stay at that ten percent, uh, for this year. And then everything going forward then will be the fifteen, uh, for that. That was about the only thing. I didn't, I tried to listen to a few things, uh, one day, and I never really caught much on what they said about that VOTEC bill and where that was going to go, and Mike probably knows more about that. And I don't know if you guys have met or if he has talked about it, so. Yeah, so I can't even tell you where that, that one ended up. The one, like I said, I checked was that transition minimum was really what I was looking forward to. It was always listening, so that's kind of where we're at with that.
Okay, thank you, any questions? Not J R's, secondary principal.
Uh, the only other thing that I got to add is, uh, today, the juniors took the ad hoc test, and the seniors went to a career event in Jameson. All new, aside from the report.
I want to give kudos to Mr. Wilson, Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Undom, and a bunch of the high school students who helped at the basketball program with clock and everything, because you guys, of all the places we went this fall, you guys definitely did the best, um, level of reffing and things like that, so kudos to you guys, what you do.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, Mr. Wilson? If not, both the tech and elementary principals aren't here, so they had their report in the, in your package. Roll the committee reports. You know, roll extracurricular building grounds.
Yeah, you could just start with extracurricular, I suppose, and then just work through.
Extracurricular, start there.
Uh, there's the co-op for soccer, uh, at the Jameson. Basically, the main focus is currently the situation with baseball is, with the city trying to figure out and going forward with that, so. Since that's one's going to be affected first, that's the main, main priority on that, so. If we guys have the, the vote for the soccer co-op coming up on the agenda.
Any other questions, activity?
Is the baseball supposed to adjust this spring?
No.
No.
Twenty-four.
So, what is it, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, so twenty-five, twenty-six, the spring of twenty-six will be the first year that it would affect, yes.
Move to building and grounds, transportation's next.
Basically, talk about future repairs.
Yeah.
Um, transportation issues looking forward, um, and the gym.
Yeah, gym floors, which is on here again, uh, buildings, just, uh, possible repairs coming up. There's a couple leaks, one over by the gym and one by the kitchen that, uh, button down, been up on the roof, uh, looking at, and they think they got them taken care of. Uh, but like we talked about, I mean, you build a new house, and in ten years, you're going to have to start making updates and do some stuff to it. This building is no different, and we're kind of getting to that point right now, but, you know, so we need to kind of get in front of it and look at things that possibly could come up or are here, you know, and, and roofs is always one of them, especially fa- flat roofs in North Dakota. Uh, it's not a matter of if, it's more a matter of when. Uh, you're going to have to do some work on those, so trying to stay ahead of those.
Do they do the roof inspection in the fall or in the spring normally?
Gosh, do you remember?
Does it know they have to come each year this day?
What did Bud say? Do you remember what he said? I don't remember what he said, Mike.
You know, we talk about looking at everything the spring after the winter.
Yeah.
That's usually all the problem.
But the heart of the thing, they have to run once a year, but I just didn't remember if it was fall or spring.
Yeah, and I'd, I'd have to check, Mike, and let you know, I'd, I know Bud has mentioned it, but I don't remember off the top of my head when it was, uh, for that. And then transportation, you know, I was just talking about the fleet and bus routes and, you know, whether we need to look at a big bus, a mini bus, a passenger van, or what, what fits our needs, and also what fits in our budget, you know, as well with that, based on our routes and number of kids riding and those kind of things for that. And then, as we talked about.
It's spring.
It's spring.
I got the report in April last year.
And as we talked about the, you know, what it's going to look like with the county down, number of plows, and, you know, if we do get another hard winter and some people, you know, don't get plowed out for quite some time, what are we going to do? And one of the things we had talked about was looking at maybe pickup spots in, in towns within our district uh, for that, towns and or like places right off of a main highway for that, like, uh, I don't know, North Rogers, that.
Where the football.
Where the football guys, where we pick up kids right now for that, not going like, well, a farmyard two miles in, no, for that, because you still have to hit the gravel, and you still have to do whatever, places right off of that. So, looking at, you know, just kind of coming up with, once again, hoping we never have to use it, but just, you know, in Sanborn, here's where you go, and Daisy, here's where we'd go, and Wimbledon, and Courtney, here's where you go, and meet times and those kind of things. And then, you know, getting that out to people, so.
I missed the meeting on, as far as the weather goes, do we have like contacts with the township boards that are in our school district? Because I know, just leaving here on the gravel going north, the one township blades the roads pretty quick, the other one not so much, so you go, the road is nice and taken care of, and boom, then you're back fighting drifts forever. And just that main road, I mean, a lot of people travel on that, and I've personally called them on it, but is the school, Bud's got a point of contact on that?
Yeah, Bud knows who most of them are, he's been around here, uh, long enough. And I do, even last year, I mean, I fielded some calls just on those issues. And to be honest, I fielded calls from patrons that live in towns about what they can do for clean out. And unfortunately, I don't have an answer for them, uh, on that, yeah. If they're not, if they don't realize a, a family lives here that's got a kid going to school, then it's a point of contact, you know, for me to say, you know, a mile down that road, there still is a family with kids that do ride the bus. So, I, I guess I can't tell you when to get there, but I guess I could tell you, you need to get there at some point, because the bus is going there or needs to get there, uh.
And the township's at the mercy of whoever they're hiring.
Right, yeah.
Township wants to get the roads open too.
But just having like, if Bud's being on the township board too, you know, Bud's calling saying, hey, you know, these roads are getting tough, can you do something about it? I mean, it's nice to know who's going to contact township and who the township should be reaching out to at the school, you know, and just have that communication.
Yeah.
Dustin County's posted on their website, all the different offices of every township.
Yeah, so that's something, I mean.
And he's talking to the highway department, they know who the every township office is.
Right, yeah. So I wish I, you know, had a definite answer, say, yeah, we talk to them all the time, and soon as we do, they get to it, Eric, but that's not always the case, or hardly ever the case, so, yeah.
It might be nice to have a resource of those local to the region that have big enough equipment to clear a road. If you know, this family has a mid-plow, and, you know, if we could have a list that.
Yeah.
But then it comes down to cost reimbursement.
Right, comes down to cost and reimbursement, and it comes down to, I mean, what, you know, the, the plower, the grader comes through and does, or compared to when a farmer cuts one trail down it, that doesn't fit, you know, the width of the tires on a bus either, so we really don't get too much ahead, yeah. But that's, was the intent of the letter, was to just kind of make sure people were informed so that, you know, if we do get to that point, or maybe there can look at what can I do to help out as well, you know, so we can work together, because like it said in the letter, this isn't the, this isn't our problem, this is a we problem.
And Jamie's talked to us as township people too, to see what we can do to try to keep things as around the shoulder. She's been in contact with, like you at the school, she's been in contact with us at the township.
Yeah, so, but I did, I mean, I appreciated that conversation with her and the heads up on it, just so that we can kind of get ahead of it a little bit too.
Questions, Matt, Dylan, Drew, and Personnel Committee.
Lee, Tyler.
Some possibilities in getting some different teachers that have dual roles, so it's something probably to look at.
Uh, just kind of gave them a little bit, sorry, Tyler, a little bit of homework of, you know, for personnel, whatever, what are some of our priorities moving forward also, and what positions? I mean, do we still want to actively look at or seek out here in the future and, you know, for offerings for our kids as well, uh, for that, uh, go ahead, Tyler.
Well, we just talked about how he would probably shoot us an email or something, a heads up on like possible candidates for openings and stuff too, so we're informed of who, who we're looking at in hiring for certain positions, so we're, and then possibly one of us sitting in on interviews as well, so.
Yeah, talked about.
Just so we can inform you guys and everybody else what's happening going on with.
Yep.
Or all on the same team.
Yeah, for informational and, you know, how active that this group wants to be, and just doing that, whether they can make it or not, and whether they, you know, can get it out of you guys then, who are not on the committee, have any questions or anything like that, just to make sure that they're informed, what we're kind of looking at doing, moving ahead. And then, part of it, uh, part of conversation was about the pre-k teacher as well too, a little bit, that you see later in your agenda as well.
Any questions there on personnel? Moved on unfinished or strategic plan?
Yeah, I mean, same as last, uh, within that time, from the last board meeting, uh, up to about a week ago, some recommendations from committee members came in that were added to the strategic plan. So now the strategic planning committee, uh, has to go back and meet again to go through those recommendations, uh, for that. So basically, this, the plans kind of tabled for the time being, until we meet, we're still going to be moving forward. I mean, with our cognia stuff and the information we've got, we can take and start working on that, uh, review for this spring, so.
Okay, we'll just table that and order on what is next needed. New business superintendent evaluation, Mr. Curry and I visited a little about that here. Before, everything, basically, all areas came back rated as satisfactory. So if there's any, I guess we can roll through a few things, if anything you, you had wanted to come up for. Andy, if you have anything you want to ask about, because we talked.
Do you mind if I ask questions? I mean, it's going to probably call out whoever wrote a comment or anything on there, so. I mean, I, if you don't want me to, I won't, uh, for that, but. Right, just for clarity, and some of it, Mike, uh, clarified a few things, uh, within there too, because a couple of questions I had was, you know, because last year was a negotiating year, so it was like, well, if it's not a negotiating year, you know, there's a certain time, uh, that we can send out contracts. We can't send them out before that date in March after that, so it's like, well, how soon, within that time, has B C N sent them out in the past, you know, on a non-negotiating year, uh, for that? So it's either March first or fifteenth, do you remember what it is?
Been around April first, probably on either side.
Yeah, for that, but yes, the intent would be to get, especially in a non-negotiating year.
We can't be earlier than March fifteenth.
Right, is to get them out.
Between there and April one.
As soon as possible to that date, you know, it doesn't help, you know, on a resignation in June or anything like that. But no, I think the intent would be the sooner the better, as early as we can, so if somebody's not coming back, we can look to fill those positions, and hopefully, there's more applicants for that. Uh, the other things I just asked, you know, and Mike and I talked about was, you know, exit interview, a summary of that, and most have been good about filling those out, and, uh, just so that, you know, if there was a glaring, uh, negative response in there, I would, you know, disseminate that information out to the board if I, you know, thought that, most of them, you know, it comes back to location driving and money. Uh, for that are the biggest things are than, if there is a negative, those are the negatives. It's not, you know, staff, people, anything like that, so. But if there ever was, I would make sure I let you guys know, uh, for that. Uh, better understanding of the evaluation process. I'll be very upfront and honest, when I read this, I wasn't sure what the person was asking when I went through it, so. I mean, you could comment, don't, that's fine, I just didn't under, I guess, as I read through it, I'm not sure what the recommendation or what you want me to do with it.
Because we talked about, is it the process, what you're using, or do you want more information, or?
Yeah.
We talked about that a little bit.
And, yeah, if you don't want to answer now, I guess if you want to call me personally and talk to me about it, I don't know, Mike, how you want to do it, but.
Some might not be that.
And then maybe not, yeah. Uh, for that, like I said, most of them, I mean, that was probably about it. And I don't disagree with like Personnel Committee and Curriculum Committee setting priorities together, uh, just, though while no one being that six people that constitutes a board meeting, when we do something like that, uh, in there.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe one from a committee could join.
Right, yeah. That way, you could technically, you could have two, and you're still not to a quorum of a board for that. Five, so you could have two from each committee.
Three, oh, and two, then you're coming from.
For that, so the, yeah, so those are kind of things Mike and I went through and just discussed some of them, clarification, and said I wasn't really sure on the one, was more of an understanding thing for me from that person. But I appreciate the comments, I like the comments, they're beneficial for me, so I appreciate that.
That sentence reads, I would like a better understanding of the process of direct reports to the superintendent. Timing, discussion topics, constructive criticism areas for both employee and school.
Yeah, so. So, yeah, so I guess those are just comments I have on it, and like I said, appreciate the input.
No, and like I say, every area of performance came back rated as satisfactory, so we can do individually, we can do in the whole, but we do need a motion to approve the type of superintendent evaluation.
I think we move to do it without the whole. So I'll make a home shot to sta- how do I word it?
Through the evaluation.
A sort of a satisfactory evaluation.
In all areas.
In all areas.
Motions for satisfactory to all areas of performance.
What he said.
Thank you for being a bad, we know some were late.
Mike.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Cody.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Oh, and we'll sign this after, then she can get it in the file.
Yep.
Okay, gym floor resurfacing, you going to take care of that part of it?
Yep, uh, and we ran this through, uh, brought this up at our Buildings and Grounds Transportation, uh, Committee meeting. It's just something I don't remember even though when I thought about it or asked Bud about it, if it was the summer or this fall or whatever it was, and the floors, our gym floors have never been, like, taken back down to the original wood, so it's got ten years of, uh, little bit of sanding and wax on it, which if you go in there and look, I mean, you can tell there's a, you know, the color that it originally was is not the color that it is now, so you obviously, you saw the price quote on it, you saw the floor design that, uh, Mr. Wilson and Bud and I, they gave us three different ones, we kind of pulled from each one and put together one that we really liked, and I think the committee thought that it was, uh.
Layout number four.
Yep, layout number four, yeah, for that, and that's the main gym, of course, and then the, uh, auxiliary gym, which is basically pretty much the same as what it currently is, just with a black bison head in the middle. Uh, one of the other things that has since come up, since our, uh, B G T meeting, is the possibility of adding a couple more side hoops in the auxiliary gym. And if we did that, that would be mounted on that north wall in there just for more baskets for when they have practice, or even for F I A D, I know, and that, I think it would, they would appreciate a couple more in there too, and that's something I'm getting a price quote on as far as the cost of that, but if we did that, I would go back and say, hey, could you put free throw lines?
That's another question, would you line that up?
Yes, and it would be a very minimal cost, the lining of it really doesn't cost that much. Uh, when you look at the bid, it's all the other work that, uh, that costs the money. So if we had to put a couple really light tinted free throw lines on the side, I don't think it would really add that much to the bid, i- in my opinion, I guess I don't know for sure, but I just couldn't foresee that, because we wouldn't make them dark, I mean, don't need them, it's more so just so you have a idea of where you're supposed to be at, and as far as that.
Especially with the change in the rules, the free throw are going to become more and more important.
Right, yeah, uh, for that, so I'll, yeah, Buildings and Grounds guys, if you've got anything, any other input on it, or?
You know, I didn't realize, like we said at the meeting, just walking in, everything still looks new and stuff, but after walking through that morning with Bud, there's definitely some issues that need to be taken care of with it, prevent it from maintenance, I think it'd be big.
Andy will be surprised that, that, um, Andy, when we're visiting before, when that gets resurfaced, how bright it's going to look.
Yeah.
It's nowhere near white like it was.
No, it's almost, the white, it's supposed to be white, it's almost the color of this table.
Yeah.
Here, I mean, it's, it's pretty weathered, and there's, there's spots where.
There's some ripples in there from the wa- wax, and it helps seal up that original wood too, uh, yeah.
I guess we were thinking of, it needs to be done, whether we do both of them right away, or? Because you were, you said, Mr. Curry, usually those gym floors don't go past ten years, right?
Well.
Usually, or a lot of them.
Yeah, a lot of them, in my prior districts, especially one I was at for quite a while, we did them every three years. Uh, for that, of course, it wasn't the cost that it is now to redo them either. It was cheaper back then, just like everything else, uh, for that, and I don't know if that's because there's ten layers of wax instead of three that they have to take down, and, which is a lot more time for them, and a lot more pads, I am assuming, and just, you know, man hours.
At the committee meeting, we were thinking is at least the main gym, either we do both of them or set it up on a schedule, so this is like a planned expense, you know, every four years, five years, six years, whatever we want, alternate the gyms to, whatever the board wants to do.
And that's where we talked, before we came in here, you know, that's something maybe, as we're budgeting, we talked about, you listed some of the tech things, some of these things should be, so we could have probably threw some mill or so to buildings or building fund, you know, this fall and.
What is the timeline for gym closure then, when they do something like that? Because it's like a week for.
Well, Bud was saying.
Regular.
It depends upon what.
Product, right?
Sealant or the, yeah, the top layer that they put on, if it's a oil-based or if it's a water-based.
Water-based is like, basically, almost, you could have to the next day.
Is that the one he said, and then the, the other one would be like two weeks or three weeks, or, yeah, for that? So, if approved, uh, our next step is to get it on the books, but Bud was then going to talk to the guy about what they would put on the top and, you know, what the timeline would then look at, because, you know, the next few years, however long it would be, you know, it's Bud that sands it down, and then it's Steins that comes in and lays down that, that product on top of it too. So we have to know what that's going to look like, and, you know, there might be a different cost, but one of them might actually last longer, look better also for over X number of years.
Did they say which one would last longer when you guys, like, discussed everything?
They didn't really say, either way, it would be better for longevity, I guess.
No, and I, yeah, and we hadn't, I guess, Tyler, we hadn't got to that part of the conversation yet, as far as which one it would be that they would do.
You just don't want it to turn that gold tint color of two years of wax, that really looks, you know.
Yeah.
Been a few gyms I've been, they just get that old.
It's starting to turn, you know.
Yeah. For that, because this, I mean, the idea is this would come out of the building fund, this project would.
So, you recommend do both, what's the Building and Grounds recommend, do both of them, try to stagger them moving forward?
Talking to Rob, I mean, either we do both or, for sure, the main gym, I think, right away. But it's up to, do we want to do both right away, or stagger them and get them on a schedule?
I, I think I would recommend doing both, and then looking at a staggered schedule after that, where you maybe do your next, your main gym in three, four years, and your aux gym in six years or whatever, yeah. Something like that, I mean, I guess, if you're looking for a recommendation, that's what I would recommend.
When was the timeframe for this getting done, where, when?
That's what I, that's why I wanted, hoping to get this approved, Eric, so I can call him and say, put us on the books, when are you looking at coming?
Most of them shut your gym down for, say, two weeks.
Yeah.
Then maybe you get it for the summer now?
Yeah. The idea is, yeah, to get it for the summer, because this F L S Sanders, they're out of Princeton, Minnesota. The idea is, yeah, to get it for the summer, cause this F L S Sanders, they're out of Princeton, Minnesota, and they do a lot of like central eastern North Dakota, so basically they have like two, three crews, that one comes up and sands, one comes up and does the other thing, one comes up and does the wax, and they just keep popping around to all these districts on the eastern side and in Minnesota and just keep going through, so you're at a little bit, you're at the mercy of them when they're in your area, but at least if we can say, alright, put us on the books, you know, when are you gonna be in our area, so that we know.
So our anticipated total cost is fifty thousand dollars.
Roughly, the two together, yep.
And that was, you said to come from the building funds, that would not attach the general fund?
No, that would be come from the building fund, yes.
I still move to approve the, uh, proposal for the gym floor resurfacing of the main gym and the auxiliary gym to be scheduled as soon as possible.
Another discussion, your question. Harry, none, Lindsay, or?
Jennifer.
Yes.
Cody.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Eric.
Get that in the works, okay, and then we have pre-k teacher approval?
Yeah, interviewed a couple for the pre-k teacher position and, uh, consensus of the group was to offer a contract to Michaela Nelson, who is student teaching right now in kindergarten Valley City. She will graduate first part of December, uh, and if approved, her starting date would be on the eleventh of December, and any contract, you know, as a new one, she's got a sub license already, she's subbed through college and everything else, uh, and it would be no different than any of our past teachers who have come in and they haven't had the license, they've been working on renewals or whatever. Uh, she would not be put on a teaching contract until Lindsay and I physically had that licensure from the state, and then she would be put on a prorated contact of the number of days left within our s- school year, whether it's ninety-five or whatever, and everything would be prorated, salary benefits, uh, like leave and all that would be prorated off of that time, so.
Date of the licensure.
The date of the licensure, not start date, unless she has that on the start date, then yes. Otherwise, it would be the date that we physically have that from her.
What is the normal time from graduation to license, or is it?
She's, and she's, well, I've been in contact with her about this, so she's actually been in contact with E S P B. So maybe with E S P B, knowing that she could possibly have a job, they might bump that up a little bit. Uh, you know, it's probably different in the, a fall or winter graduate compared to a spring, because there's not as many, so it's probably a quicker process than in the spring, uh, but I guess think about it, she's aware and of what we would do, uh, compensatory wise with that, so it's kind of, the ball's kind of in her court with it.
It'll be long-term subpay until the point of licensure.
Well, it would be subpay until she reached that eleventh day and turn into long-term subpay, yes.
Eleven days in that.
Yes.
Do you know what level she comes in at or not?
As far as, she'd be a zero zero.
Zero zero.
Because she's a new graduate, so, so she'd come in at the forty-three base, yeah.
So we would need a motion to accept that hire.
I'm afraid to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to hire Michaela Nelson on all the provisions that were just stated. Does that work?
All second. So then you, when you get that, then, then we'll produce a contract that we need to sign.
Yes, correct, yes.
Okay. Lindsay, you all call.
Michelle.
Yes.
Cody. Jennifer.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Eric.
Yeah.
Tyler.
Yes.
Cindy.
Did you just have the two applicants, or how many applicants did you have?
Uh, there was actually three, but one came in as we were pretty much done with the process.
Just to check.
Yep.
Soccer co-op, of course, we all could need approval to join that with James Hill.
So, I will make a motion to approve a soccer co-op with James Hill.
Boys and girls.
Boys and girls, soccer co-op with James Hill.
All second, that.
Any other comments or questions?
What is the financial responsibility of a co-op from our perspective to what is our cost share?
We won't get charged anything until we have participants.
So then it's per participant or just a block, okay, thank you.
Be similar to what we're doing with Valley.
Well, and I saw the dollar amount paid to Valley for the football, I just didn't know how that came up, so.
Yeah, it'd be similar to our, I'm assuming, our gymnastics and hockey co-ops.
What, what we're defending is the activity fees, basically.
Yeah, so then that would be the same, would you guys, would that just carry over to that, for the football fees, stuff like that, we would pay James Hill fees.
Okay.
Other costs for this co-op would be nothing for culture, no, it's just participation.
Well, and I anticipate it'd be similar rules to X amount of students to play to give boxing situations.
All those would apply.
Okay, is it six?
Yep.
Who was the second, I missed it. Cody. Tyler.
Yes.
Eric. Jennifer.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Cody.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Do you have to sign anything?
I have to sign it, yeah.
So here's something we gotta send over to them?
Yeah.
Yeah, he'll sign it and then I'll send it to.
With James Hill, the gymnastics, hockey and soccer.
Yeah.
Okay, miscellaneous committee stuff, uh, family connection, nothing. Career tech, we actually meet this next week, last month, which was after our meeting, but basically our meeting was doing a contract with the architect, we had to go through all that, we did, accepted bids for soil borings, uh, there's two other ones, one was for plotting. And I can't think what the third one was, all our stuff to get prepared for bidding. So we get all those, uh, contracts with those guys, that was basically the whole meeting last time, then now we meet next week. And I believe what went through is back to, I think with everything, I think our funding is kinda back, it's a little shorter. I think their estimate wasn't quite where it was, but we'll find out more next week. Our plan is. Project, project. And, uh, Bill, our timeline is to start, we started working with the architect on our priorities there. So we'll do that in the next couple of months, our target date is to try to start bidding in January, February to bid the project, that's where we're at right now.
I'm embarrassed to say, I have no idea where the actual building even is in Valley City, we should maybe do a field trip sometime.
We are talking, we're talking about doing that February of, uh, cause that's the career tech month.
Okay.
And we've done ones down there, we talked about it last year, but we didn't get it, so we talked about doing it this year. Yes.
What's the curtain?
Oh, I just, I'm embarrassed to say.
Cause he would've wanted to find out where the place was.
No, because I was, I was like that before too, I'm like, I don't even know where this place is at, when I came here last year.
So yes, that's in the works, we're trying to find that probably in February.
Oh, one right.
Special Ed, anything new there?
Uh, we meet on November twenty-first, uh, hoping, crossing my fingers, we may have, uh, aid position here filled, but, uh, hopefully no more here in the next few days, for sure.
Oh, there is a potential applicant.
Uh, I think there's a potential hire, we don't do anything with that, that all comes through, special Ed, so, yeah.
Well, she was, she starts on the twentieth.
Was it Dunn Dunn though?
Yeah.
With Andrea?
Uh, yep.
I didn't talk to her either.
Dempsey, I believe is her last name. I'll pull it up. Yeah, on there, cause, uh, she sent email to Paige and Tori to start putting her schedule together.
Good. Okay. Nothing else, our next meeting, December twentieth, Georgia.